I'd like to call the Tuesday, May 10th, School Board Meeting to Order. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. Hironz.
Here.
Ms. Kidby.
Here.
Mr. McOscar.
Here.
Madam Chair, do we have a call?
Excellent. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting to discuss or consider an appointment of personnel pursuant to the personnel exemption at Section 2.2-3711A-1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are in short closed session. We'll be back in a few minutes.
Whereas the Stafford County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, requires certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you pull the board?
Ms. Egan.
Agreed.
Ms. Hazard.
Agreed.
Ms. Healy.
Agree.
Mr. Hironz.
Agreed.
Ms. Kidby.
Agree.
Mr. McOscar.
Agreed.
Motion passes unanimously.
Do we have a motion from closed session?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Hironz.
I move that the school board approve the recommendation of the superintendent for the Assistant Principal position at Drew Middle School.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Dr. Benson.
Thank you. We are pleased to announce the appointment of Dr. Christopher Pendigraft to the position of Assistant Principal at Drew Middle School. Dr. Pendigraft has served as Career and Technical Education Department Chair at Massaponix High School and Dean of Students with Spotsylvania County Schools. He comes to this position having most recently served as Marketing Education Teacher, where he assisted in the development of curriculum for a new sports entertainment and recreation marketing course, and actively ensured for the differentiation of instruction to meet students' individual needs. Dr. Pendigraft is a graduate of the University of Mary Washington, having earned a Bachelor of Liberal Studies in Business Administration and a Master's of Education in Secondary Education. He earned a Doctorate of Education in Educational Leadership from Capella University. Congratulations, Dr. Pendigraft. Excited to have you join our...
Stand up, please, Dr. Pendigraft.
Welcome to the Drew Rams.
He gets his invitation to the Under the Lights next year rematch.
Absolutely. From that resume, it sounds like we're in even better hands.
Do we have a second motion?
Madam Chair, second motion?
Go ahead, Mr. McOscar.
I move the school board approve the superintendent's recommendation for the Assistant Principal at Ferry Farm Elementary School.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Dr. Benson?
Thank you. Ms. Cara Calucci is the school board's appointment this evening as Assistant Principal for Ferry Farm Elementary School. Since 2009, Ms. Calucci served as the Assistant Principal at Margaret Brent Elementary School. Prior to this, she served as an elementary teacher with Stafford County Schools. Cara has had a variety of leadership responsibilities while at Margaret Brent Elementary School. She served as a special education designee and facilitated the Response to Intervention Program. Ms. Calucci is also a member of the Board for the Northern Region of Destination Imagination. Ms. Calucci has a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education from West Virginia University. She has a Master of Education degree in Educational Leadership from Virginia Commonwealth University.
Stand up.
Okay, I'll say something too. Well, welcome to the Ferry Farm Eagles.
All right, moving on, we're going to rise for a moment of silence and have the presentation of the colors by the Stafford High School Navy JROTC. ROTC, sorry.
I place my hand to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Next, I have a look for approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to have a friendly amendment. Madam Chair, I'd like to amend 1401, closed session, and add, keep as written and just add personnel matters as well.
Mr. Nelson, do you have the exemption? Or can we?
I can read the one I just read.
Okay. Same appointment.
Is it same exemption to read?
Okay. All right, so I hear that the motion is to approve the agenda as written, adding, amending 1401 to include personnel matters.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and the agenda is approved. Next, I would ask the board members to pull out the list that was left at your spot. Earlier in April this year, we recognized our Service Employees of the Year, which was a wonderful thing that we do. We had a wonderful evening at Mountain View High School. As of right now, we had not read the names of all of those wonderful employees of the year. We're going to, if you are here this evening, we would love for you to stand up for our service employees, and we're going to read all of the names into the record, and then at the end, we're going to recognize our two main sponsors for that event. So I will start with Ms. Healy. You'll start us off.
AG Wright Middle School, Kathleen Butler. Alvin York Bandi Complex, Linda Powell. Alvin York Bandi Complex, Shirley Spellman. Annie Moncur Elementary School, Helen Brendan. Anthony Burns Elementary School, Veronica Gates. Brookpoint High School, Anne F. Jennings. Colonial Forge High School, Lorraine C. Lynch. Conway Elementary School, Kayla Knutson.
Dixon Smith Middle School, Rula Daniel. Edward E. Drew Middle School is Yvonne Bourne. Falmouth Elementary School is Tara Lowry. Ferry Farm Elementary School is Kathleen Moody. Fleet Services, Mike Hinkle. Transportation Services, Keith Martin. And Garrisonville Elementary is Tricia Weiderman.
At Crafton Village Elementary School, we have Katie Smith. At HH Pool Middle School, Charlene Lewis. Hampton Oaks Middle School, Diane, or Hampton Oaks Elementary School, Diane Schwartz. Hartwood Elementary, Debbie Polowski. Head Start is Whitney Shelton. Kate Waller Barrett is Jennifer Page. Margaret Brent is Shannon Schersbrich. And Mountain View High School is Mary Lenhart.
From North Stafford High School, Sandra Dennis. Operations and Maintenance, Catherine Leighton Dress. Park Ridge Elementary, Kristen Pruitt. Rock Hill Elementary, Tequila Davis Conhenho. Rocky Run Elementary School, Carrie Theberdo. Ronnie Thompson Middle School, Olivia Nielsen. Shirley Heim Middle School, Sherry Krezma. Stafford Elementary School, Maritas Medina. And Stafford High School, Alyssa Williams.
Stafford Middle School, Nicholas C. Gale Middle School, Beth Hamilton. Do I get credit for that clap at all? No? Since I read it, no? Okay, well, that's great. That's so wonderful that you're here. Transportation Services, Kwaku Opere Kumie. Transportation Services, Dolores Cruz. Transportation Services, Brenda Phillips Jones. Widewater Elementary School, Ava Medina. I'm sorry, Anna Medina. Winding Creek Elementary School, Jennifer Neff. And Technology, Patty Toler.
I'd like to announce our Administrative Support Person of the Year, which was Kayla Knutson at Conway Elementary. Our Instructional Support Person of the Year, Jennifer Neff from Winding Creek Elementary. Service Support Person of the Year, Brenda Phillips Jones in Transportation. And Technical Professional Support Person of the Year was Nicholas C. TTT at Stafford Middle. If we could give a round of applause for everybody. I'm going to ask Dr. Benson to join our clerk down at the front. One of the neatest thing, one of the many neat things that happens with our Service Employees of the Year is we are very well supported by Apple Federal Credit Union and also a local business as well, Rosner Toyota, who allows us to pull out the keys and some, one of our lucky four winners gets to drive the car for a whole year, which is very fun. It's fun to watch them pull the keys out. And so tonight, I would like to just make sure that our community partners are recognized because they really do contribute to us. So I would like Robert Sorrell, Senior Vice President of Community Relations, and Debbie Seacrest from Apple Federal Credit Union to come down. And I think we have two helpers from Apple Credit Union. If you all will come forward, we truly appreciate. And I'd like Greg Michelson, General Manager of Rosner Toyota in Stafford, to also join us down front. We really thank you all for your support. We look forward to many years of partnering in this way. It's wonderful. Thank you so much. Moving on to our proclamation, I'm going to look to Mr. Hironz to read this one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is for our wonderful nurses out there. The proclamation designate National School Nurse Day, May 11th, 2016. Whereas children are the future, and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow. And whereas all students have a right to have their health needs safely met while in their school setting. And whereas children today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school. And whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and ensuring students' academic success for more than 100 years. And whereas school nurses and professional nurses, sorry, whereas school nurses are professional nurses that advance the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievements of all students by serving on the front lines and providing a critical safety net for our nation's most fragile children. And whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, parents, and healthcare providers on behalf of the children's, on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children. And whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care when children's cognitive development is at its peak. And whereas school nurses are members of school-based mental health teams. And whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day. Now therefore be proclaimed that the school board on this 10th day of May 2016, that the school board hereby designates May 11th, 2016, as National School Nurse Day. The school board takes this opportunity to thank all of our school nurses. And we absolutely do, if we have nurses here tonight. If you could stand and...
If you all will stand up, please.
One of the things we learned in this budget session, budget year, or maybe not learned, I think we all kind of knew, but was reemphasized at one point in one of our meetings that here in Stafford County, we employ nurses in all of our buildings, or that's our intent. And that's not a requirement by the state, but in my opinion, it is money well spent. You guys do a fabulous job. You have a clinic of as many as 2,000 students that you're responsible for, and we sure do appreciate the service you provide for us. So thank you.
Could not have said it better. I think we all, I was actually in the nurse's office with the child last two weeks with both of them. So thank you all for everything that you all do. Moving on to our staff reports, we'll be doing the April Quarterly Financial Report. Mr. Wolf, and I'll let you start with brief comments.
Evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Benson. In front of you is the Quarterly Financial Report dated April 2016, which reflects the results for the school division as of March 31st, 2016. On page one is an overview of the status of our various revenue sources and expenditures. And the long and short is that on the revenue side, the one area where we seem to be lagging a little bit is with our federal revenues. We seem to be trailing. The federal government is behind in making its payments to local governments and to school divisions. But we see a potential shortfall of about $250,000 in the federal revenues. And we feel that when we review the actual results for the month of April and May, we will be in a better position to see what that shortfall will be and what the impact will be as a result. However, overall, we're looking much better. If you look at page two in Exhibit A, our assets overall, which are an increase over the same time last year, primarily reflect an increase in cash. So our liquidity position is as good as compared to the prior year. In Exhibit B, this shows you where we are. Typically, at the end of every month, we wind up being at a zeroed-out point. Partly here, what happened at the end of this particular month was we had some, received some revenue from the state, or what we thought was revenue from the state, that actually was an overpayment. The result of that is we've reflected the reduction to the revenue from the state, but we wound up receiving more money from the county. So in essence, this is an amount of money that was drawn down on paper as a journal entry on both sides. County made the same entry we did, that we, this reflects an amount of money that we technically owe back to the county as of this point in time. However, by the time April, we get to the end of April, you'll see that this matter will have been completely cleared up and will not be shown as a negative amount after the fact. In Exhibit C, which is page four, you can see at the top there where the negative amount is coming from, from the county transfer. Again, it reflects something that the journal entry made to, which was based on how much state revenue we had, which was overstated. We had to reflect that as a lower amount. So up at the top, you see in the column, unbilled, there is the amount that really winds up driving the amount of that negative amount, which gets corrected in the month of April. Down below, where you see the various categories of expenditures, instruction, we're at 62.2%. Administration attendance and health, 62.3%. Transportation, 71.3%, and this is including the encumbrances, some of which is prior-year encumbrances at this point that were already reflected in here. And operations and maintenance at 75.5%. Food services at 60.5% on page five. Facilities at 68.4%. Debt service, 53%. A lot of that has to do with the timing of when the debt service payments are made. In the month of April, there's another debt service payment made for the fleet, the energy lease. And then in the month of May, there was another ERP lease payment made as well. So you'll see this will quickly catch up for the debt service. Technology is just shy of 70%. So in the end, you see that our overall obligations are about 2/3 of the year, about 64.4%. Page six, the changes in the budget are the same changes in the budget that were in place as of December 31. There were no other changes. The supplemental appropriations for the bus replacements had been made by the county, and then the prior-year encumbrances for prior-year purchase orders were already made as well. And in addition to that, there was nothing left on hold. All amounts that were on hold were already appropriated as of this point in time. And then page seven just gives you the overview of the various significant areas having to do with the reporting entity and our financial statements and the various areas that reflect our liquidity, which is amounts due from the county and from other various funds. And our accrued salaries, which at this stage of the game has already cleared through. And so we really only have accrued salaries looking forward. When we get to the end of the current fiscal year, we will have the month, we will have the July 1, August 1, September 1 payrolls that will be for the 10, 11, and 12-month employees. And that's my report on the financial statement, the financial report. I do have some information about budget transfers, just like I had in... Prior quarters, I just want to hand this out to the board members. And I know Ms. Kidby likes to have the details, and I will be sending the file of the details that are behind these numbers. The top page provides you with the overview of where everything flows from the beginning of the year with the adopted budget to where we are with the amended budget as of right now. And then on the second page is a detailed analysis that shows you where we were at the end of the second quarter and how the second quarter changes for all those transfers that were 10,000 and more versus the transfers that were under 10,000, how we landed as of 3/31 in that fourth column. And then a reiteration that shows you, in essence, what our nine-month totals of transfers were for those that were over 10,000 and those were under 10,000, and how it lands back at the same ending point. And again, the details behind this, I can make available to, I will make available to all board members tomorrow. That reflects all the details that comprise this for the transfers that are 10,000 and over. In accordance with Dr., with Ms. Kidby's request that it have all the information that she was looking for the last time around as...
So these are net numbers?
These are all net numbers, yes.
You had a couple of questions. Go ahead. Ms. Kidby, start us off.
As I look at, we've received approximately 50% of the transfer from local funding. Is that correct, it looks like, in terms of revenue?
Correct.
But I am assuming, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that the whole amount has been appropriated. The holdback, the 5% holdback is no longer held back. Everything's been appropriated. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other question? Ms. Healy?
I just had a question on the ADM. You know, we always wait anxiously till March 31st. And I notice in here that it says we are 179 students over our budgeted amount of students, which is a good thing because that means we'll get more money. Do you know how much in dollars that 179 students translates into from the state?
Yes, if I recall correctly, that amount is slightly over 600,000.
All right, and have we made any, ooh, wake up. Was that included in the monies we were looking at at the work session last week as potentially available for the end of the year?
No, that was strictly, the revenue that we estimated would be left unspent. So the revenues would be an extra amount. And again, the state is one number, and then we know we have some federal funds that may be a deficit. And we also have some local, other local miscellaneous monies that we may have a little bit of a deficit. So we got, we're still in the process of looking at what we think our revenue picture is going to look like overall, and we'll be in a position next month to review that with the board.
Why would there be a deficit from the federal and state monies?
Well, there are some types of funds that we get that are not regular recurring types of things that we budget for. And if the federal government slows down in its remittances to divisions and to the local governments, we would just have less revenue.
Okay, well, I would like to make sure we address that sooner rather than later because potentially 600,000 or thereabouts is a significant amount of money, and there may be things that we need that we could potentially procure for the school division. Or the end of the year.
Whatever net excess revenues on top of what's been appropriated, we believe is what we're anticipating that we'll be able to report back. And that would require an additional appropriation, obviously, because it hasn't been appropriated yet.
Right, but we can reasonably expect an additional 600,000 from the state because of these additional 179 students.
That's correct.
Thank you. And Madam Chairman, I suggest that we post this information and the backup information that Mr. Wolf's going to provide tomorrow on our website to have some kind of a link because I know there's quite a few members of the public who are interested in, you know, our expenditures as well as our income. And I think we need to make this information available to everyone. And I'm glad we have this information, and we can assure the public this is 100% accurate, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We will make sure that, in accordance with Ms. Healy's request, that all of this information is posted on the website tomorrow.
Is that acceptable to...
Sure.
Thank you.
Just real quick, if the detail that you were suggesting that Ms. Kidby wants, I'm sure there's other board members that are interested too. Maybe that could be at least made available at the next FAB meeting, if not before. Also, it might be helpful if by the next FAB meeting, you have a better picture of what our revenue flow is going to be from those various sources, ups and downs, that kind of thing. That might be helpful as well.
Yes, as we have in the past, everything that we're trying to get before the board will go before the FAB committee.
Terrific. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. All right, we are moving on to citizen comments. I have two speakers already signed up. I'm going to go through the overview of citizen comments. If, once I call the two that are already listed, if you are also planning on speaking tonight, if you would go ahead and sort of line up behind them, then sign the clipboard, that would be great. It keeps everything moving. moving. So, speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation. If the spokesperson represents an organization, speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. You'll see the red, yellow, and green. When it gets to yellow, that means you have one minute. When the red goes on, you have five seconds to wrap up. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in policy 1113, Public Complaints. First, we have Catherine Dennis, and then followed by Dana Brown, and anybody who would like to speak after them, if you would just line up and then come on up to the podium
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Benson. My name is Catherine Dennis, and I live at 7506 Chancellor Road. And I am a Stafford County Public School retiree, a high school teacher. But I haven't quite gotten away from my school as I've served since I've retired as a long-term sub because my school needed me in different capacities, and my license is current. I came tonight to speak to you about the consideration of the pilot cellphone policy being made permanent. I can tell you, as someone who is in the schools, I'm very much against that. It has destroyed the sense of place and the sense of purpose of school. It is a constant disruption. The loss of instructional time from trying to get the kids to put away the cellphones as they're entering your classroom, or put away the cellphones that they bring out to text or do other things. We just lose so much instructional time. And the disrespect that the teachers are having to endure, to include, being told to F off many times. Cheating. I caught a student cheating on a geometry test using FaceTime. The bullying. Several of you mentioned earlier this year about Twitter polls. That was new to me. So I had a student give me the name of a couple of Twitter polls at my school. And I looked at them. I was shocked. The bullying is unbelievable. I even saw a picture taken of another child defecating and posted, complete with their school gear. Also, fights. The fights, any fights that are happening, they're filmed and they're on YouTube before the referral can get to the AP. I'm not sure that's something that we want. We have plenty of technology in Stafford. They have done a wonderful job. We have Chromebooks. We have iPads. We have computer labs. We have classrooms with multiple computers. There's never, we have clickers. There's not a shortage of technology. And I would like you to make using cellphones in the classroom the exception and not the rule. And roll this back and get those cellphones out of the halls. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dana Brown. I live at 41 St. Williams Way. I'm to him here tonight to speak about cellphone policy. I would like to request that you go back to the old cellphone policy, the one we had where the kids could bring their phones to school, but they could only use them before and after school. I wish you would listen to the teachers who are on the front lines and in the trenches every day. I'd rather have you get behind them than the administrator who sits behind the desk. The teachers need you on this. They don't always get their voice heard because sometimes other people don't want their voices heard. Two weeks ago, one of your principals asked all of his students not to use their cellphones for at least a half an hour. And it was for a very, very good reason. They blew them off, and they did it anyway. That shows that you have lost control. This wide-open policy is teaching kids it's okay to be disrespectful to their supervisor. And in this case, that's their teacher and their principal. The notion that you're teaching them how to use it correctly, I believe is false. And I also believe it's an excuse by some administrators that just don't want to do their jobs. I've sat here in this room and listened to them tell you there were just too many violations to keep up with. The answer is not to default and just simply ignore it. Who is in charge here? Are the children in charge? Please, respect your teachers. It's really important. And reconsider rolling this back to the old policy. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members, Madam Chair, Dr. Benson. I'm Lori Rogan. I'm the school nurse manager for Stafford County Public Schools. And I live at 11 Burns Road, Stafford County. And I would like to recognize two of the nurses that have gone above and beyond and gotten their national certification in school nursing. One of those nurses did that this year, this past summer. And the other one has held that for 15 years. Collette Hakana, please stand up.
Yeah.
She, Collette has, it was a four-hour, it's a four-hour, 350-question examination that took hours and hours of preparation, hours of clinical practice. And we're very proud of her. And then Beth Hamilton, please stand. She has also held this certification for 15 years, which includes a much higher level of CEU preparation and level of commitment to the students. And with that, they really do show, hold, I lost my speech. These nurses show a commitment to providing professional nursing care to our children and youth by validating their competence through school nursing certification. And I'm just very, very proud of them. The other thing I'd like to put forward to you is that the teachers are recognized for their certification. Beth Hamilton, who has had this for 15 years, has never been recognized in compensation for pay for having certification. I would ask that in the future that you consider some kind of compensation for going above and beyond and holding this kind of professional certification. And I would also ask that, I know that we did a comparison study. Thank you, Dr. Benson. I think you've gone above and beyond, going very systematically about trying to figure out where we need to put our monies and our raises. And I commend you for getting that budget passed and all that you've done. But in the process, our school nurses are still much below the teacher salary scale. They are expected to be there every day. The acuity level, meaning the amount of medical needs that their students are seeing, is higher and higher. And we need good nurses in the schools. And if we don't give them a raise, I'm afraid that we are not going to have good nurses. So I just ask you to consider that in next year's budget and really put those school nurses first. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Okay, seeing nobody moving, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. We will move on to student discipline.
On April 21, 2016, a committee of the board met to consider two student disciplinary matters. The committee expelled Student A and authorized Student A to attend the Regional Alternative Education Program. And the committee suspended Student B for the remainder of the 2015-16 school year and authorized Student B to attend the Regional Alternative Education Program.
Thank you very much. Moving on to board member comments. Mr. Hirons, I'll let you get started.
I'm going to take a couple minutes to talk about some comments that were made, I think, about two weeks ago by Ms. Thompson, who's our SEA president. She spoke a couple weeks ago about how we did the budget this year and was critical that we had a budget and then we received some additional state money that was directed towards salaries, or that was supposed, a majority of it was supposed to be directed towards salaries. And then we took our, the budget we made, and we took that money and put it into the salary area and then funded some other priorities that we had with what we originally had budgeted in salaries. When she first set them up here, I kind of dismissed the comments. And I thought, well, you know how it works. That's how it works. But I thought about it and thought about it over the last couple of weeks, especially over the last week with everything that went on. And she's not wrong. She's right about how it should work. We should have had a budget with our funding based off of what we knew at the time it was growing as we were going through the process. And then we presented to the Board of Supervisors and with the expectation of them funding our request. And then that additional state money should have been directed towards compensation for our teachers, for our nurses, for all of our staff. I hope in the future, we can get to the point where it's working, it works the way it should, the way Ms. Thompson spoke about how it should work. Because, again, she's right. And we've kind of experienced over the last two weeks, we need to be doing a better job communicating with our funding body. And that goes both ways. We did send a letter this week, I think Ms. Hazard may have some more comments about the specifics of the letter, that we asked them, we requested to have joint meetings with them, either by way of joint FAB, Finance and Budget Meeting, or the three-on-three, the Joint Working Group. We need to reengage those conversations. And one of the things I want to make sure we do with the Board of Supervisors is come to a common understanding of the future of Stafford County Public Schools and our vision, to ensure we have a joint vision so we both have an understanding. Because I'm really concerned right now, the two bodies are working in two different directions, or working off of two separate visions. We're about to kick off and roll into, we've actually, I guess, already kicked it off, but we'll be adopting a new strategic plan and a new model on how we do business strategic management around here. And that is based heavily on what the vision is, what our vision is of Stafford County Public Schools. And in order to work to that vision, we're going to need a certain amount of revenue to make things happen. We need to have those relationships built with the Board of Supervisors. So I most certainly hope we can have those meetings soon, and we can start that conversation to ensure both of the bodies, both our body and the funding body, are in the same sheet of music. And that's really all I had for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Kidby?
Thank you. Mr. Hirons, I'm so glad you brought up the strategic plan because in my comments tonight, I wanted to bring light to the strategic plan, to the vision that we have for Stafford County Public Schools in relation to the goals that have been identified, the four main goals that have been identified for, as we go forward with our strategic plan. A tremendous amount of work has been put in to this plan. And the process for this plan has been so well thought out. Sometimes amongst all this other rhetoric that we go through as a governing body, we lose sight of why we're here. And it has to do with student achievement. It has to do with creating a workforce that is of the highest quality that we can possibly have. It has to do with stewardship and establishing and maintaining efficient and transparent and responsible oversight over our resources, and communicating amongst ourselves as a staff and us as a governing body, and certainly to our community. And I think it's very, very important that we refocus on that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Egan?
Mine's rather quick. Just want to let everybody know the Legislative Committee was postponed from last Thursday due to other pending issues that we had. We will be rescheduling it to a date yet to be determined. And I just want to take a second to thank all of our high school administrators and our teachers and our PTSOs for doing the after-prom year after year and giving our students a safe place to be, to hang out, rather than being out, you know, getting into trouble and not being safe. So kudos to all of our high schools, our administrators, our PTOs for continuing to do this and making it real fun for our kids every year. So thanks.
Ms. Healy?
I want to thank Dr. Benson and Mr. Wolf for providing that comprehensive quarterly report, financial. And I'm glad we're going to be posting it so it'll be available for all members of the public. And I agree with Mr. Hirons that, you know, it may appear that the two bodies are not working in sync. But I do think that both the Board of Supervisors and this board are first and foremost concerned with the quality of education in Stafford County. It's the service that we provide, not just to our students, but this community as a school district, is incredibly valuable to Stafford County. And I do believe the supervisors recognize that. And, you know, they're, they want to work with us, I believe. But I think it's incumbent on us to regain that trust. And I think, I think we lost the trust. I think we ourselves lost the trust. But we're, we're working to get that back. And I think, you know, we have a journey, and we've gotten started. I think Dr. Benson has helped tremendously in forging ahead and representing us in the sessions before the Board of Supervisors. That's a start. But I think it's going to be incumbent on us individually and collectively, you know, as board members, to do what we can to regain that trust and to work with the supervisors. And I know, I appreciate my counterpart, Mrs. Mauer, who called me this week to reach out and, you know, suggested we meet and talk about it. And, you know, we will be talking. I hope, as Mr. Hirons says, the three-on-three Joint Working Committee will get started. And I have to say, it's not because we haven't tried, but we haven't been able to, you know, to get a date yet. But perhaps now we will be setting a date shortly. I know our FAB is working hard. So I just want to make sure that the community understands that we are not adversaries of the Board of Supervisors. We need to, you know, be allies with the supervisors because we all have the same mission and the same goal. And that's to provide the best education we can for the students in Stafford County. So, and I'm also looking forward to all the activities this month and next month and getting ready for those graduations. Thank you.
Mr. McCosker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Few words. First, another year is almost over. And just once again, a special thanks to the teachers and the administrators and the folks in this building as well who work so hard, support personnel, to make sure that our kids are learning what they're supposed to be learning and they're doing it in a safe manner. And we're moving forward as a county. So that's, that's good, that's good stuff. And so I know folks here, a lot of things going on. There's always going to be issues and hiccups in large organizations, as we are the size of GEICO and the biggest employer in South Stafford. And we'll fix it and we'll move on. But 98, 99% of the folks are doing just wonderful work, and I'd like to thank you for that. Contracts are out for many folks. There may be some hiccups that I'm hearing whispers about, and we're going to discuss that and get back with you all. Dr. Benson will get back with you all on that. A CGS update, a Commonwealth Governor's School, this is a bit dated as of last week. But the Commonwealth Governor's School selections are out. Notifications went out this last week. So congratulations to the kids who have got into Governor's School for this year. Registration for the summer camps have also come and gone. So you should be, you should have already gotten your letters for summer camps. And they're wonderful, wonderful opportunities at many of our schools. And many of our teachers in Stafford County worked those summer camps for the kids. And so congratulations to the kids who got into those camps because it's not easy getting into them, and they're all free, which is a good thing, right? Six teams from Stafford County went to global finals, destination for imagination. And as you've heard, last week, we had a briefing on that. And as always, our county does wonderful in that competition. We also had a gifted teachers meeting. We also had a gifted teachers meeting with our gifted coordinator, a little symposium also to help discussion, planning and collaboration across our schools and our grade, grade levels to make sure that we're doing the right things by the kids and the gifted children. That is a special population that we need to focus on as just like anybody else, the And thanks to Carrie McShay for giving that update to me via email. Another congratulation to our service employees and the teacher awardees of the year, fabulous job. Prom and after-prom, as was mentioned, South Stafford, you know, Stafford High School had their prom and after-prom. I was at both. I should say I was at the prom and then the wife took the after-prom because those of you who don't know how it works is, the prom is from seven to 11:00 and then we had to clean up with some of the staff member here. We cleaned up and then we, we packed out and then I kind of tag teamed my wife and then she went to the after-prom, which is 12:00 midnight to about 5:00 in the morning. And last year, I don't, I didn't get the numbers, but last year we had 350 kids at Stafford High School, according to what I was told. And that's just a wonderful, and you, and, and here my wife talk about it and the kids talk about it, I'm talking food, games, bouncy houses.
Prizes.
Prizes, candy. And they just have a wonderful time and it, and it's because of the South Stafford folks and Stafford County, because it happens in all school, but I can speak to South Stafford. It was because of the folks that help out, the teachers and the support personnel and the parents and the board members that show up. It, it's just a wonderful thing and I was very, very proud to, that night of, of our kids. And from what I heard, they all got home safe and that's, that's important. So I'm very excited about the future of Stafford County Public Schools under the leadership of Dr. Benson. We've had some leadership hiccups like any organization and you heard them in the press and, and we're working through those. This is a good budget year. I mean, I've been on the board four and a half years now. This is the best budget year we've ever had. And it's because of, we're pulling out and our budget folks are doing the hard work and they're, and we're being, we're being transparent. And even though, even if we're making mistakes, we're finding the money and we're putting it towards where it should be. I think, Madam Chair, you said last week, it was 95% of the money's going towards the classroom. Just to give you some idea of, of where the money's going, you know, in general terms, you know, we approved a median teacher's pay scale enhancement of $1.2 million. Service and other employees got $819,000, which was an upgrade for paraprofessionals and bus drivers and CTT personnel. Two percent COLA, a two percent cost of living increase costs $3.8 million. Although the state gives us some money, they only give us money for SOQ positions, Standards of Quality positions, which is about 50% of our employees, if I'm not mistaken, forty, sixty percent. And it's only usually for half a year. So we still have to come up, so for the full two percent raise, if you will, we still have to fund the rest of our employees for the other half of the year and then the folks that are not on the standard of quality. And that's what costs $3.8 million. VRS, you know, the Virginia Retirement System, which in a way on the back door, people are getting more money because they're getting more money put into their retirement plans. And we're paying the, the taxes on that and some other things. And that, that was almost $1.2 million out of our budget. And that's, and this is all recurring. So it's, it's real money. Things like we've added paraprofessionals, 20 teachers and 25 paras this current year. We've added elementary school staffing requirements, we're going to add 29 for class size reduction. High school staffing, five. Special education staffing, 41.5 new teachers. Two teachers additional, eight teachers, another, we, we, last week, we had a discussion about our math specialists where the middle school principals came up to us and said, "Board, we really need math specialists." And we, and we put those four back in the budget. And textbooks and bus replacements and other things. I guess what, why I had, took a few, a minute or two to say that, but that the board has been working very hard, the Budget and Finance Committee and the staff. And, you know, this is a great budget and we put a whole bunch of folks back to work and we want to continue to do that. You know, that's going to be, you're going to see that reflected in the, the comprehensive plan, you're going to see that in the strategic plan, you're going to see that. And you're going, we're going to, we're going to design metrics based on that. Mostly the staff will design metrics based on those, on those key things in the, in the strategic plan. And, and we're going to move forward. So, once again, I'm, I'm very excited about the budget and I'm very excited about this board coming together and working with our, our partners across the street. That's it.
Well, I will open with us talking about, one of the duties that we have right now is, the board met last Thursday regarding our procedures for filling the vacancy on the Griffiths-Widewater District School Board. We hope that those who are a, you must be a registered voter and be a bona fide resident of the Griffiths-Widewater District. We will be receiving applications through, by, through close of business, which is 4:30 on Thursday, May 19th. We will be requesting a letter of interest, a resume, application and a certificate of candidate qualification. All of these documents are linked on our board. You also may contact our clerk if you have questions. I would invite anybody who is considering running for that seat or be, asking to be appointed, reach out to board members, find out, you know, what the job is like. But as much as each one of us, I know, puts in a lot of work in this job, there is a lot of benefit to it, being in the schools, watching out for your community. And I think the most important thing about working for the schools and being a part of the schools is you're working for your community now, but really, the community you're also working for is the next one. You're working for the next generation, you're working for the generation after that. And we get to support some of the most fantastic people. I know last week was Teacher Appreciation Week and I know lots of great things happened in the schools, or at least when I was going through, it was pretty neat. So we get to support those folks. So not only if you're not, even if you're saying, "I'm not going to apply for that job, I don't live in that district," get involved in your schools, get involved in this community. And even if you don't still have kids in the schools, there are so many opportunities to come in and get involved. And I would just invite you to do that because you're not just touching today, you're touching tomorrow. In that regard, I would just like to say, there is so much to celebrate in Stafford County Public Schools at this time of year. I shared this the other, last Tuesday at the Board of Supervisors meeting. I talked about the great things going on. Now that my kids are getting older, I have watched some kids grow up since I've known them since they were like four and five. And now they're getting their acceptance letters or they know where they're going. And it's just such an exciting type, time of year. So I thank the teachers who've invested in that, but I thank the students who've been invested in that. It's just a, it's a great place to be. Every, every place that's a family, we have function, we have dysfunction, we have all those things, but we do stay together. And I am looking forward to moving forward. We may hit some bumps, but I do know going forward that we all have the interest of this community and the next generation for our kids, grandkids and all those in there, in our community going forward. And I hope that we do all band together to work together for our schools and for our community. In that, nope. For the board, I believe you all sent, got a copy of the letter that was sent over on Monday. If you did not, please make sure, but everybody should have gotten a copy of that letter as we agreed to last Thursday. And with that, I will turn it over to the superintendent.
No comments this evening, Madam Chair, but thank you.
All right. Moving on to consent. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded regarding consent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent items 1101 and 1102 have been approved. Moving on to action items. Action item 12.01, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move for approval of item 12.01.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I'd just like...
Just a quick note of, this is the next step in adopting our strategic plan. This adds our priorities and then as Mr. McCosker mentioned, staff will start developing metrics off of these.
I would just like to thank, you know, the folks that worked on this, Mr. Hirons and Ms. Healy. So we're, we're finally seeing this to fruition and it's a great product. Even when we sat back in the, in the work session talking about it, was a couple of happy to glad changes, but that was about it. And so just, I'd like to thank you all for putting some extra hard work in and, and taking it, taking this strategic plan by the horns.
Ms. Healy?
Madam Chairman, would it be possible to ask Dr. Benson to send a thank you to the task force members who worked on this? They, they were amazing. I mean, the, the staff, the administrators, the teachers, the students. It was really a wonderful experience to be able to, to collaborate, you know, with them. And of course, Mr. Hirons. You don't need to send us one, right? But, but I'm, well, send Mr. Hirons too. I don't need one. But I, I just think it would, it would be nice that, that they can see because this is, this has been a long time coming. This started, what, more than six months ago, you know, much more than that. And you can't thank yourself, but we can thank you because you were a very important part of, of all those meetings, you know, and, and helping guide the, the task force. So thank you.
So we'll send a letter and we'll attach the work to date so that folks can see what has been approved to date.
Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to 12.02. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions? I know, Mr. McCosker?
You know, I, I had some issues last, I was all pumped up last week about the $600,000. So can we, and the reason, it's explained last week, was that Lance came in and said that he had taken the last three, the average of the last three amounts and found about $250,000 in savings. And so Ms. Healy had asked the question about, well, is this $600,000 that we're approving, does that take into the account, the 250? So was it 850? And now it's 600?
I think it was like 930, wasn't it?
So the answer is?
Yeah, so this is the correct amount, but, and then we've got the right fiscal years here. So I, I really appreciate you getting all that corrected and getting it straight. Because not, not just for this board, but I, I think for the public. Because a lot of people, you know, look at our agendas, they look at the items and, and we, we need to make sure that the information is accurate. And I'm, I'm sure this is accurate, so thank you for correcting it.
That's, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Dr. Quinn, if we approve tonight, is it correct that registration may begin tomorrow or in the next day or two? Is, is how I read it, at least.
I may run right up to my office tonight and send the materials out so we can get it going in the morning.
Excellent.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, Ms. Egan.
I've been hearing some, or reading some queries from some folks who would like to take advantage of summer employment opportunities. So if, we had a teacher that was interested in teaching summer school at, say, Brookpoint High School, how did they go about doing that?
In the package that we sent out, we call it our Leadership Team Packet, has all the materials in terms of application materials for the teachers and also for the students. It all comes in one-stop shopping in one package.
Okay, so the teachers are getting copies of this as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it, do we have it posted anywhere on a website, on our website?
Right, we'll have it posted as well.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have summer school program approved. Moving on to 12.03. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve 12.03.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? We're good?
I'm good.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to 12.04. Is there a motion?
Move to approve 12.04.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'm going to ask Ms. Healy, did you happen to review to make sure that language?
Oh, absolutely. They, they gave us our own separate exhibit.
Then they better kept, have kept as a template.
And they're, yeah, that's right. They're, they're not, I guess we are not accepting the, the trees and limbs that are cut will no longer be ours or...
Yeah, so we added that in there. I read that as well, so. We just got to remember that template.
Yep.
All right, we'll keep it there.
I can't change the contract, I, I just don't know how.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. 12.05, do I have a motion?
Move to approve 12.05.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to information items. 13.01, approved superintendent's proposed reorganization and funding in the amount of $88,788 from FY '17 budgeted funds. Dr. Benson, or any?
Well, Madam Chair, we've, we've discussed the reorganization previously. I've, I've tried to simplify the change in FTEs and the additional costs that we required beyond what we've budgeted. The majority of the changes, we, we estimate to be cost neutral because of the, the change in, in personnel. The board has had an opportunity to review the job descriptions and the assigned pay grades. If, if the board is, is, would, would do so, we would very much appreciate moving to action such that we could advertise the, the vacancies.
I think the board has received this information and I know I'm ready to move to action, so I'll make a motion to move 1301 to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move 13.01 to action. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there another motion?
Move to approve 1301.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
This is probably another significant thing that we're doing as a board to make improvements to the school division, to enable Dr. Benson to bring his vision, the reason why he's here and, overall, I think the end result will be a much improved school division.
Any other comment?
And I'd just like to add on to that, and as you see, this is what a manager does, a senior manager, is he evaluates the folks that he has on board. As, we're taking a few jobs away that are currently doing, that we're not doing effectively, that is not helping the mission, and then we're adding some into the mission. And so that's why we have all these job changes and only an $80,000 delta. So I mean, $80,000 delta. So I appreciate that, that hard work because that's not easy work.
Any other comments?
I'd like to also say that part of Dr. Benson's job is to look at an organization and determine what makes sense. I know that Dr. Benson spent the first year reviewing and understanding how Stafford County does things and then determining how we as an organization can deliver services better for our students and staff. And as I said, as echoing Mr. McCosker's comments, I think this is a first step in working towards our delivery, our service delivery, and I am happy to support this model. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. 13.02, approve the use of FY '16 estimated year-end funds totaling $6,800...
Wait a minute, wasn't that any information? Adam?
It is an information.
What did we know? We just, this one, we just moved to action. Okay, got it. Did we vote twice?
We did. Correct? Our super-clerk?
Yeah, we did.
Super-clerk.
Did we get her? Yeah.
Sorry. I'll slow it down, but I thought, usually, usually I have the opposite request.
The librarians goodies right now.
All right, well, 13.02 for information concerning the estimated year-end funds, $6,846,000 for various needs. This topic was discussed at our work session on Thursday. Any comments?
I just have a question. If, if, we're going to need these funds to do the, the improvements that we're looking at, shouldn't we, should we be moving this? It's on for information, I thought it would have been...
I, I have a question.
Right.
Just related to the item, not necessarily...
We can, we can move it to, to, we can do just like the other item, we can move it to action.
Okay.
But because we had not seen this particular item, it felt like it should be on for information.
Gotcha, okay.
Last question as well.
Okay. Mr. Hirons, do you want to start?
And I don't know if Lance or Ms. Fitzgerald. The item that we have agreed to, 1.7 million for, is a $300 stipend, and our intent is for it to be $300 in the take-home. Hopefully, it gets close for everybody. My question is, what employees does that include, or maybe, does it exclude any employees? It is intended to go to everybody who works for Stafford County Public Schools full-time?
Full-time, no, it's all contracted, full and part-time contracted employees, is my understanding, and that's what the numbers were based on.
Okay. What does that, so that includes the entire instructional staff, teachers, everybody, you know, the building folks, includes the trades?
Could we ask her to come up to the podium so we can share with the people watching the answers? Thank you.
My understanding, what my direction was, was that it was to go to all contract employees. That includes full-time and part-time contracted employees. It does not include hourly employees who don't have regular hours, substitute employees, et cetera.
Who are the hourly employees that don't have? Bus drivers, is what I'm getting at. Do bus drivers?
Well, we have some hourly bus drivers who don't have contracts.
Okay.
And then we have, you know, like cafeteria hostess interpreters, those people who don't have contracts.
Okay. But the vast majority of, say, bus drivers, it does include, I think it's vast majority?
It would, the way you could think of it is, anybody who is eligible to participate in health and dental insurance is going to receive this money.
Okay.
And that will be bus drivers, the majority of the bus drivers?
Contracted bus drivers, yes.
Contracted bus drivers.
What about our long-term subs? I mean, they're basically, you know, teachers.
They're not contracted. And they're not eligible for benefits.
Because they do all the work that the teachers do for significant times, all right. Perhaps we could get a list of the categories of, not for tonight, but get that and we can look at it and see if we have something left over.
And something if we happen to get additional money allocated to us.
Well, I, well, I mean, at least, at least we'll have that information available if we do have some funds.
And I understand that the hourly cafeteria workers are going to get, Mr. Sly is trying to get them...
He budgeted for the same increase that we were paying for the division.
So he budgeted for the 2% increase on the hourly cafeteria workers, which was a concern, I know of many of us, and then also that the bus drivers were taken care of in that 819, you know, a little, a little, taken care of a little bit more on that separate item of 819,000 in our adopted budget.
So Brian, do you remember the approximate number of employees that were included in the calculation?
Lance, was it 3,690 some?
We had to do a head count, remember?
Yeah, it's...
You said the number, it was close to 3,800 people.
Yeah, people. That doesn't equate to FTEs, because some of them are part-time, but 3,800 and some people.
That's a massive, vast majority.
The intent of the board was to get the stipend to as many of our, of our employees as we can, and, you know, it's always a struggle, and we always want to do what we can for compensation. So we appreciate the work that Finance did to figure out how we can do it, and hopefully this helps a little.
And once again, this is that, thank you, Mr. Hirons, you're exactly right. This is that one-time money, that we want to use that one-time money to give back to the employees, and so...
I'm sorry. I understand we need to, you know, take action on this tonight, and I have no objection to that, but I would like to have returned to us at the next meeting, a list of the classes of jobs, that positions, whatever, however you want to categorize it, that are not included here. It doesn't sound like there's very many. If 3,800 are included, there's not that many more, you know, employees, and perhaps that's something that we can, can look at at the next meeting and, you know, handle that separately from this. Would that be too much work if we, you know, did two rounds, or would it be better just to wait and do it all at once at the next meeting?
Ms. Healy, the challenge for us is to, is to be able to get this into the June 1 paycheck. And so if there's something else that the board might want to consider, it might not necessarily be this fiscal year consideration. We might need to look at FY '17 in order for us to get everything configured and run those, run paychecks.
But if we were, so if we were to approve this tonight for the employees that are covered, if we were to address the other employees, the ones that were left out of this group at the next meeting, could we not have it appropriated and then dispersed, even if it were after June 1st? I mean, that's certainly something we do with our, you know, other items that we appropriate funds for.
We can investigate about the timing and our ability to do that, but I would ask the board, actually strongly encourage the board to move this forward so that we can get it...
I have no objection to that, but I do want to look at the, you know, the ones that aren't covered, particularly if they're, you know, people that are, you know, with us for a longer period of time, and just because of the way the system runs, they're, you know, they're not eligible. Because it certainly, I think, was the intent of the board, that this be, you know, for all the employees, unlike what the county did with the, you know, the health benefits part. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd move 13.02.
I have one more comment. Sorry to keep laboring.
No, I was going to make sure of something.
I just wanted to make sure that people understand, because they don't see what's in front of us, that, so the things that I discussed about the approved budget, this is on top of those things. This is $6.8 million more in one-time money, and as we stated, it's 1.7 million for the stipend of $300, and we're also adding things like 15 more school buses to get that life cycle fleet back up, in addition to the three in the original budget. So, so this is all, like, this is, this is all good, good, good stuff, so. And we have other things of O&amp;M projects for different schools, so, anyway, that's it.
Madam Chair, if I may. I think it's, thank you so much for bringing that up, because I think it's important that the public is aware that we're not just buying new buses, because it would be nice to have a brand-new shiny bus. These are buses that are replacing buses that have too many miles on them and that need to be retired. Safety for our children is paramount for this board, always has been, always has been. And it's, it's very important that these buses get, the ones that are older get cycled out, and these new ones get brought in.
Move to, move 13.02 to action?
Second.
All right. 13...
Yes, you did. I tried.
13.02 has been moved to action. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We are voting on whether to move the action, the item to action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there a follow-on motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Madam Chairman, I would, you know, ask that information come back to us at the next meeting about the categories of employees and the number of employees who were not included in this, and also what the cost would be to, you know, give them a stipend as well. Thank you.
I would just like to mention, the O&amp;M projects and the projects contained on here, one of the challenges with the many things that we take care of, we have, let's see, 31 schools, I'm sure Mr. Haran could tell us the amount of space and everything else that we manage, projects that, at one point, when we approve or look at, they move around on a list. We get lists all the time of things that bump each other that have to be moved up, and I think that we have looked at this list, trying to prioritize and taking in the accounts of what needs to be funded. Many of these projects are generators, cooling things, things that we need to do when our schools and most of our students are out of the building. And I know that we have looked over those lists, so I just wanted to mention that before we move on to a vote.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to 13.03.
I have questions. Well, one in particular. Some folks were talking earlier about the cell phone policy, and last year, we had some information that was brought to us about referrals and things like that. Do we have anything to back up making this a permanent policy versus the pilot?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Benson, Madam Clerk. Ordinarily, I have a little spiel about the code of conduct and the different rules that the committee is asking you to consider. However, we've gone directly to a question about cell phones. I have no data to share with you tonight. I can tell you that the committee, which consisted of 14 individuals plus input from other segments of your community, recommended that the pilot be elevated to regular status. In their view, and they represent five high school principals, two middle school principals, and two elementary school principals, plus the associate superintendent, the chief academic officers, believe that this rule works well. And I, I believe what you're talking about, Mrs. Egan, is the BYOD survey. It's not a cell phone survey, per se. That has been implemented. Some data has been received. I believe it's being analyzed now. I've not seen the results, but I'm informed that generally speaking, those results show more favorability among staff. I would, Ms. Healy will remember this, perhaps Ms. Kidby as well, this rule has caused you more pain than any rule that you have in the code of conduct. 20 years ago, probably until about 15 years ago, the state banned by law cell phones, of course, that was pre-cell phone, but they banned bag phones, beepers. Beepers were believed to be only used by drug lords and doctors and airplane pilots, so they were not permitted in school. That did not stop beepers in school. They were still there. The state changed its policy and allowed school boards to become involved in cell phones, their predecessor. This board, every year for about seven years, studied cell phones. Some of you will remember calls from your public, from parents who were very upset with your predecessor rule, because their child who had never had an offense in their entire life had dropped their cell phone on the floor, and lo and behold, they were penalized for it, because that's the way the rule worked. And it was your rule. I will remind you of that. And the board, much of this is board language. So what has changed? First off, you have these acceptable use agreements that each student has to sign concerning the cell phones.
Yeah, I got 14 of them at the beginning of the school year.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Well, you can distribute it to the 12 people that perhaps didn't get them.
Okay, so let me just interrupt you real quick, because I heard this the last time, too. And the point is, is that we were told last year, when it was another pilot term, that that's just what it was, a pilot. A pilot, you go back and you evaluate to see how things are going, and I don't see anything in front of me. So if I don't have any of this information when we have to vote on this again, I'll be voting against this again next, next week, or next meeting.
I understand that position, but I believe you are conflating BYOD policy with the cell phone rule. Your cell phone rule says, unless the teacher authorizes it, it cannot be used in the classroom. It cannot be possessed, it cannot be displayed. If the students do that, it's an offense. That's what your rules are. It already does what you wish it to do.
But Mr. Nelson, I think what Ms. Egan's first question was, and I believe we did receive this information last year, at the last meeting before we voted on it, was information about the number of referrals, I think it was number of referrals by school, and the type of violation it was with, with regards to cell phone, or something, somewhere along those lines. I think that's what she's asking for this time. Over the last, over the current school year, can we get some information about the number of referrals that have been handed down for cell phone policy violation? I appreciate the kids sign off on their, their use agreement, but there's still violations, so there's still got to be some referrals handed down.
We have a data that we submit to the state. It's not in a final form right now, but we can get you preliminary data as to offenses at the school level that pertain only to cell phones.
I think that's what we're looking for.
Well, it depends on how the state classifies electronic devices. It may be a little bit broader than just cell phones, but we'll get you the data that we are...
If we could go back and look a year ago and see what was provided to us then, because I'm pretty sure we had some sort of data sheet provided to us.
You had a data sheet with offenses per school.
Mm-hmm, I remember.
But wasn't it related directly to this discussion? And, you know, I don't recall it offhand. Maybe it wasn't filtered down. Maybe it was just by school as a whole.
Yeah, I remember voting against it, because I, we wanted more details, and I'm going to vote against it again.
Is there any other information that we would like? It seems like, I mean, I'm just trying to make sure that we have that information in front of us. I think we've listed some of it.
I'd just like to say a comment. You know, this is not, this is not going to be any surprise to you all. I have been on the board for a couple of years, and I haven't voted for, for this, these phones in this classrooms at all. So we can come with surveys, and I think the number was 534 people we surveyed, whether you call it BYODs, cell phones, but the teachers, you know, they marked that they did not want the cell phones in the school on that survey. And so those two things could be used, you know, those two words, BYOD, bring your own device, it was cell phones was, was what they were responding to, if I remember correctly. And so, and even, and even over, you know, I have two kids in high school and two kids in elementary school, so I'm not kind of at a touch. And even the folks that I talk to in the high school, they're like, you know, we really, the kids are like, we really don't want, we really don't need these, these cell phones in the school. And then almost all the teachers I talk to say, we, these things are bad. These things are not helping. These are counterproductive. So, I won't be voting for this. I would be voting to rescind back to the middle school policy.
I want to just piggyback on that and thank Ms. Dennis for coming by tonight and giving us her thoughts, probably about two, maybe three months ago. We had a phone conversation, many of the same things, and she was leaving my son's classroom at the time, and from her long-term subposition, thank you for getting him through geometry, by the way. But she's, she's right in a lot of things that she says. We need to ensure the teachers are empowered to be able to crack down on this. I think it's probably better than I had stated in previous years are my concerns, but I still, and especially without the data that we talked about, I, I'm most certainly going to remain in the same position I've been the last two years. I can't support expanding, or not expand this process, policy, but not making it the regular policy. I stated when we first adopted this as a pilot process, this is just, it's pilot, but once it's there, it's going to become regular. Now, it hasn't become regular, but we keep bringing it up as a pilot, three years now? Two years now, so.
As I said, the board's been heavily invested in this rule, so if you're contemplating not voting for it, I'd ask that you consider what you wish the rule to look like. It's had different shapes, and some of you will remember the complaints that arose because of those previous formats from your parent community.
I do agree with that. There were, we were a little heavy-handed at some locations, I think, with the policy, but I think we can work on, work on it.
We had students that were actually put out of the National Honor Society because they inadvertently had a cell phone in their backpack that may have gone off, and under the, you know, there was a mandatory, what was it, one-day-in-school suspension? Which made, disqualified them from being in the Honor Society. And I appreciate Ms. Dennis's sharing her thoughts with us as well. I don't think she said she didn't want, not she personally, but, you know, speaking from her experience as a teacher, the, the criticism didn't appear to be about not having cell phones in school, it was having the cell phones during the school day. And that's, you know, that, that was an issue, you know, when this first came in as a pilot, and the reason it was going to be a pilot was because we wanted to study it. We wanted to see, you know, exactly what the impact would be during the school day, because the big issue was, you know, this policy allows the students to use the phones in the hallway and before and after class. in the hallway and before and after class. And I think, you know, Ms. Egan's recollection is, you know, very similar to mine. You know, we had asked for data on it, and I'm not sure that we, we've gotten anything recently. I think something may have been given to us last year. So, it's hard to make a decision on making something a permanent rule versus a pilot project without having something, you know, some hard facts upon which to rest that decision. So, it may be something, if there isn't data available, it may not be timely to, you know, to think about making this permanent at this point. When we finish the cellphone, I do have another question for Mr. Nelson about another change here.
And Dr. Benson, I do appreciate the folks that talked about cell phones, and I'll be watching for whistleblower stuff. So, when an employee comes to us and says stuff, we just need to make sure that as leaders, we're doing the right thing and not taking it out on them. I'll be watching for that.
Ms. Healy, you had another one?
Mr. Nelson, and my question is with respect to, I guess, what do you call them, rule number sixty-four. It's trespassing on school property, including the parking lot, and the new additions are loitering on school property before, after school hours, coming onto school property while suspended or expelled. I understand coming on the school property while suspended or expelled, because technically I would interpret that as being trespassing, since they've been, you know, given written notice, they are not allowed to come on the school property. But putting the loitering there, I don't understand why it's there, because looking at rule number thirty-seven, I believe, I'm scrolling up here slowly, it specifically addresses loitering, and it says, loitering on school property, including halls, restrooms, and parking lots. So, I'd say if we wanna add something to the loitering, it should be in rule thirty-seven rather than sixty-four, because these are very nicely done in alphabetical order. So, if someone wants to look at an offense, they can just, you know, scroll down to whatever letter of the alphabet it starts with. But to me, it would be confusing to include loitering with the trespass.
Well, you're correct that it is covered in rule thirty-seven. It's not that the committee was unaware of that. The committee wished, especially at the high school level, to add it to the trespassing, because we issue no trespassing letters at the schools from time to time, and also in suspension letters, it is mentioned no trespassing. We don't talk about loitering, but we do say no trespassing. So, the idea partly was that by including it in the definition, then this was going to enhance our ability to keep students off the campus. There's been some problem where students come onto camp, as covered by the loitering rule, where they come on the campus early, or they hang around forever, they just, they're there when they shouldn't be. Either school's closed, or it's not really operational for students at those times. The only thing we're trying to do with the, including it in trespassing, is to make sure it's covered, perhaps over frequently, but that it is covered so that students are aware that we consider loitering in those circumstances to be trespassing as well.
So, you're saying that the loitering is intended only to apply to students who've got no trespassing letters, or who have been suspended and?
I'm not, I'm not saying that it only applies to them, but it helps us in enforcing our no trespass letters, and also in enforcing the suspension and expulsion letters, which say no trespassing. You know, it's just a further place where parents can look up trespassing, what's it include?
See, I would argue that it does the opposite. To me, it raises a ambiguity. Trespassing is very clear. I mean, legally, no trespassing means you can't come on the property, you can call the sheriff and have the person removed, once you get the written notice. But loitering is different. I mean, it's not a lesser included offense.
I agree, it's not lesser included.
So, and this may be my, I have got my day job, you know, hat on here, but to me, it's more confusing to put loitering there when you've already got, you know, another item that that applies to. So, I would say it doesn't help you when you're trespassing. If anything else, it may raise a question that, well, you know, maybe trespassing isn't totally what it says by itself, if you can possibly loiter. I don't, I, I don't know. I mean, to me, it's confusing, but again, it may be the lawyer in me reading it.
I understand the-
But if you could go back and just-
Lesser included offense argument, but the school doesn't, we don't apply the-
Well, but you've got these in alphabetical order. And you're saying no loitering up here in thirty-seven, and no trespassing down here in sixty-four. So, if you're adding trust, you know, you're stating it twice, or you're, I don't know. It doesn't make any sense to me. We got enough rules, we don't have to repeat them. It doesn't help with the trespass argument.
Just so you look into it and go away, please.
We will look into it, and we'll bring you data on the cellphone.
And you can call me, except not the next three days, I'll be on the campus.
They'll be seeing us on Thursday, so.
Oh, that's true. Well, actually not. We had no hearing scheduled at this time. That's not to say you may not, but right now, there's none.
All right, are there any other questions for Mr. Nelson? All right.
Thank you.
Moving on to thirteen point oh four, Superintendent's Proposed Revisions Regarding Flexible Benefits Plan. Were there any questions for staff on this one? It didn't seem like huge changes, correct? Okay. All right, any discussion? All right. All right, let's move on to thirteen point oh five, Approve Proposed New Policy-
Madam Chairman, before you move on, would it be helpful to pass that other one tonight so the notice could go out to employees, Mr. Bryan?
Flexible benefits.
Flexible benefits.
The way is fine.
I mean, do employees need to have that notice? What, does it affect a number of employees?
Not until open enrollment, so.
Oh, okay, not, okay, so this is for next August, not this, okay, I got it, thank
Thirteen point oh five, regarding new policy probationary period service employees. Any questions or updates?
I have to ask Mr. Fitzgerald to come up to the podium. The division doesn't currently have a policy related to probationary period for employees, and I think that's an important thing for us to have as an organization, to stipulate what our expectations are, what kind of feedback employees can expect, and what their rights would be as participatory, as probationary employees. So, we're bringing a draft policy and regulations to the board for your consideration. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Benson. Yes, ma'am, we're bringing before the board a proposed new policy and regulation policy, forty-four oh six, entitled probationary period for service employees. And with the approval of the recommended policy and regulation, a period of twelve months would be recommended and put into place for new service employees, and also newly promoted, demoted, and/or transferred service employees. This twelve-month period of time would be an opportunity for the employee to develop an understanding of the jobs that they've, they've been assigned, the expectations of the job, as well as demonstrate their abilities to perform the duties and responsibilities of the job successfully. We have some conditions that, you know, the employee would be in the job for twelve months, and we did do some comparisons with our comparable districts, and we noticed that most of them do have about a six-month period. We have one district that had twelve, and we felt like twelve was comparable to our already annual contract that we have for employees, and we felt like it was a reasonable period. We can go by law up to eighteen months if we were so inclined. So, if we did have the twelve months, we could extend, and we have this as part of the regulation, we could extend an additional six months if it became absolutely necessary, but we're recommending twelve be the, be the most that we would ask an employee to undergo for the probationary period. We would encourage the supervisor to do numerous reviews during the period, and encourage frequent supervisor contact with the probationary employee, and there would be a mid-year written review required. And then subsequently, if there was not a satisfactory review, then the individual would then be expected to be dismissed after that probationary period, if it was not satisfactory. During this period, there would be no grievance rights if there was a dismissal recommendation during the probationary period. The individual is eligible for all the benefits during the probationary period. If the individual is promoted, or transferred, or does change jobs during the probationary period, the new supervisor can extend the probationary period. However, there can never be a total of more than eighteen months of probation during any one time, and we recommend that there be a reasonable period not to exceed that. And it doesn't have to be a total of eighteen months, this has to be an opportunity for the individual to demonstrate that they are learning the job, and that they are capable of performing the duties and responsibilities. If it's an involuntary transfer, the individual would not have to serve an additional probationary period. And that basically covers the expectations for an individual coming in new as a service employee, or someone who's promoted, or moves into another job while a service employee.
Are there any questions by the board? Mr. Hirons, or, oh, sorry, looked the wrong way. Go ahead, Mr. McCaskill.
I just wanted to, this is just for the service employees, so this isn't for teachers, this isn't-
No, sir, teachers have a probationary period, it's already provided under state law, as a, as a rule that's already established.
And what about, like, new administrators that come in, new folks that work in?
Yeah, this would apply, basically, we would expect it to apply for service employees, such as myself, in an annual contract kind of situation. I think that would, this, because we are expected to be in that category of service, we are in that category. However, if you are in certain categories as such a principal, assistant principal, and certain supervisory staff among the instructional staff, they would fall under the administrator-principal category, and those would be under the probationary three-year, like a teacher. And they would move into a different kind of status, but they would be, yes, basically fall under this category.
So, and so the reason I ask is just that, this is a, I think this is a good thing. This is what the federal government does, this is what decent working companies do. You know, we counsel, we say, you're doing this really good, you look them in the eye, and you're doing this, we need to improve on this. What do you got to say about that? Once I teach you, once I show you, and then you must do right. And so, that's what I think, you know, we're starting to get to now under Dr. Benson and some of the leadership here, which is a good thing. And that, because that's what we have not had when I first came on board, there were very few counseling statements on anybody, or performance, or PIPs, or whatever it is, or even, hey, you're doing a great job, you know, so that's, I'm not focusing on the bat here, okay? So, I, this is, this is a step in the right direction.
Mr. Hirons.
I think it's the right step. I'm concerned about the length of time, twelve months, if you said, did you do a full comparison of our, of our comparison?
We did, we did, we did. Over half have the six-month, I think there were two or three that did not have any probationary period whatsoever, and one other had a twelve-month.
Because it sounds like majority have six months or less, I think-
No had, well, yeah, it's less meaning none.
None. I think it'd be wise for us to do that six-month as well. It's a competitive nature right now to find people. We want to be a competitive school division. It's added, you know, I've done a quite a bit of job searching over the last several years, and every time I take a job, it's one of the things I do look at, how long is my probationary period? If it's, if it's, for me, if it's more than three months, I don't bother. As an employer, as a manager, you know, if you have an employee within six months that can hack it or not, if it takes you a full year, you probably need to take a look at your management skills a little bit.
I would ask, if I could, if that's a consensus, then we can, you know, certainly make some adjustments to that before we bring it back for action.
My only concern would be, would this put a burden on our, you know, supervisors to have to do the evaluation at midpoint, because right now, you know, we require a midpoint evaluation here. I don't, I don't have an objection to the, you know, the length of time, but I just, you know, I don't want to put an additional burden on our, you know, the supervisory staff.
But it's still kinda just one midpoint, and one end of probationary.
It's, it's when it comes, and, I mean, if you have it the year, you can kinda do it at the end of the year, when things are quieting down, as opposed to, you know, another time of year. But I certainly, I certainly am open to, you know, looking at.
Ms. Kidby?
Thank you.
Sorry.
I have a tendency to agree with Mr. Hirons. As I read through this, it's clear that at any point, with cause, I'm sure, a supervisor during that entire full-year probationary period can dismiss, with supervisor required to, let me see, it says that they can dismiss employment during the probation, it may be terminated at any time by either the supervisor or the employee, a written recommendation for dismissal must be submitted. So, so, that's a long time for somebody to have to worry about whether or not they're gonna lose their job from week to week. And I'm not suggesting that a supervisor would create that kind of environment, but it could. That does seem to be a long time. I'm thinking we might want to rethink that twelve months, whether that's really a direction we want to go, and how that's going to affect the employer supervisor, employee-supervisor relationship. I think in most cases, it's not going to be a problem. I have a lot of respect for, for most of the folks that are in a supervisor role here in the schools, but it could present a problem, particularly if there's personality conflicts or clashes.
So, is, is, okay, Mr. McCaskill.
I would just, you know, I appreciate those comments, because no one wants to be, no one wants to be on probation more than they have to. I mean, I did it. The federal government is twelve months, and the reasoning generally behind that is that you have about three months of the folks saying, this is what your job is, and this is, this is where everything is, and meet and greet, and then you have three months later, before your midterm counseling, and then, so that's when you'll evaluate, I told you what to do, I gave you a train-up session, I evaluate you for the next ninety days, and here's where you need to fix, and then you have six months to fix that. So, you know, maybe, I mean, I wouldn't go wacky if you said maybe ninety, or nine months, but I think six months may be a little bit much, because then you'd be training them, then rushing into that mid-counseling to say, this is what you need to fix, and you got forty-five more days to do it, you know, so that's, that's the only concern I have.
Ms. Egan, go ahead. I'm sorry, I had to step away for a quick second, and you guys may have already covered this, but there was a, an opportunity that I had, it was a three-month probation, and that meant no time off at all in three months. It meant no calling in sick, it meant no coming in late, it meant all of that stuff. So, you know, I'm a little bit leery about forcing teachers to go-
It's not teachers, service.
Or service personnel, whomever it applies to, that's a long time. Do we, guidelines for the probation, I mean?
Yes, if you're off, well, in speaking terms of attendance, your attendance does not count in terms of probation, in other words, that, that time off gets added to your probation. So, if you're off, you have to have that time made up in terms of your probation period, so.
So, if somebody's out sick for a week with the flu or something, that's another week they have added on to there?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there a will of the board regarding the timeframe? Are we comfortable with six? Would we like to kinda say to Dr. Benson to come back with, if you want to think through some of the?
Perhaps if we change it to six, and then gave an option for, to extend it for an additional-
Three months.
Three to six months, if, you know, as necessary. That way, you know, if the supervisor needed more time-
Yeah.
-to evaluate, or wanted to give the employee extra opportunity to show they can perform the job, then, then, you know, they could do that, just like this one is twelve with a six-month extension, if we made it six with up to a six-month extension. And the supervisor could decide, you know, how much more than, you know, that they would ask for.
Based on job type, so.
I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to thirteen- Okay, moving on to 13.06, I know this is, is Massey's item. I believe that this was highlighted in a prior presentation, Ms. Mas, I remember you saying this was a possibility that it could come forward. Even though we have great memories, could you refresh us?
Sure. What I had said was that, and I'll give you a little bit more detail, but the president had put this into his budget to extend Head Start to a regular school year, and when Congress voted for funding, they did support that. What the federal government has done in the RFP is to fund us for 40% of our enrollment, could be up to the full school year. So they're not going 100%, I think they're trying to hedge their bets on how much this is going to cost them, until they know. So, at this point, we already had 38 students that were going the full school year, that were funded federally for Head Start. The VPI, of course, is going the full school year, the state-funded VPI. So at this point, we've got 62 students that could qualify for this funding, which would be four classrooms. So that's where we came up with the figures for four classrooms and four pairs, and for two family service workers. And then we're also asking for, in startup funding, which may or may not be funded, a four-school bus.
Ms. Kidby, you want to start?
Since we're looking at four classrooms, how are we going to do, how are you going to do that? How's that, how, if you have four classrooms that are extended, how's that going to affect the curriculum for the other students? You know my obvious questions with that, so.
Sure, and we currently have that same situation. We have all of our VPI classrooms, which are three and a half right now, which, so even one half of a classroom goes the full 180 days, and the other half does not. So this would give us an opportunity to pull that other half of classroom into it, and then three other classrooms. And then we already have two Head Start-funded classrooms in addition, that are going the full 180 days. So we already have a program that ends, some of the classes end mid to late May, and then some go all the way to June. Now, what we have with the 160-day is that we have to make up all those days. So whenever we have a snow day, that the school system does not make up, because we have hours bank, Head Start has to make those days up. So we're already going about a week or so longer with our Head Start program this year than we had anticipated for the 168 days that are going through the end of, of May.
So identifying the students that get that extra time, is that kind of a lottery? Do they apply for it? How does that work?
What we're doing right now is trying to find our most needy students to go that length of time, and then we're giving our senior teachers by seniority-
Sure.
-the option of, of being the ones who take those positions.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
Are there other questions? Go ahead.
Would it help if we moved this up, or would it not have any impact on it?
Oh, it would help me out a lot.
I know, I know, we always get to you here, and you're always close to the end of the agenda, no offense, and I hate to have you have to come back again, because this one doesn't cost us a dime, right?
It does.
Oh, it does?
Because, well, you've got to, you've got to consider that we are transporting 62 students more days, so it's-
But you're trying to get a bus, right?
Right, but it's $9,000 a year more.
I thought that was, that's not included in their reimbursement? Oh.
Transportation right now is a, is one of the in-kind amounts you offer.
Well, actually, I, I think some of the, the bus drivers are trying to get more hours to, they're up, so I don't, I don't, I don't know. Dr. Benson, that wouldn't, would that present a, a problem for the transportation department that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, but we would want them to, to weigh in on it.
Okay.
And I called Barry, but he's not been in this week, so.
Okay. I think the other question, too, has to be, because this is not a budgeted item, I don't, I, for 17, we're going to, I don't know if, as part of this, we will need to identify the location of these funds, is that correct?
That would be correct, yes.
Okay. Well, Ma'am Chairman, I'd, I'd ask that we move this up on the agenda next time, so Mrs. Massey doesn't have to wait till the end, is she, she's always so patient.
I think we'll need some of the, so it'll be to contact, to, to determine the transportation piece, just so we feel like we've got that fully covered, and then an identification-
As high on the agenda as it can be, next time.
It'll be for action.
Well, and I'm also going to be bringing back to you the Cole grant, because that came out last week, so I've put that agenda item in, too, so you'll be getting that-
A two for-
Cost of living, yes, next, correct.
Okay. Are there any further questions about this item, just so that we make sure all our questions have been forwarded to staff? If there are any further, please bring them forward. Thank you for staying.
Thank you.
Next, we have 13.07. I know this is Mr. Hirons. Are there any questions on this one? Let's see, I know I'll have one, but go ahead. All right, if not, I know that I have sort of my comments, I think Mr. Hirons is aware. The board last year, at our May 26, 2015 meeting, the board decided to bump this project, this water project, to allow for the repair of the fire alarm system at HH Pool, which I did certainly support, it was deemed more critical, sort of like, as I made in my comments earlier, projects have to move around based on needs. I did support the switch for the use of these FY14 carryover funds, which paid for the HH Pool, but this project remains, as we know, near the top of the list. This is actually funded with our FY operating funds, but this is a project that must be done in the summer. It's the water. As you all know, it's the only one not on public water, so we need to do it while it's in the building. I will say I will be asking for board support for the funding and moving this to action, it appears, would that be helpful, Mr. Hirons?
Yes ma'am.
Because this is a water project, and so it can be completed in timely manner.
Ma'am Chairman, I'll make a, a motion that we move it to action. This is, this has been an issue forever and ever and ever, the water at Hartwood.
It's been moved and seconded to move this item to action. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a follow-on motion?
Ma'am Chairman, I move we approve action item, or informa, well, now action item. I don't know what number it'll be in the action, but the, to award the contract for the improved water distribution systems in support of Hartwood Elementary School.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, board members, for supporting this.
Yeah, Hartwood has water. Surprise, surprise.
We have it.
Not, not, it'll be substantially complete-
It's not out of the creek outbacking.
By, what, August 22nd, that's right.
So, we will get that going and under, we will now move on to, I'm sorry, information item 13.08, awarding the construction delivery order to Finley Asphalt and Paving. Are there any questions regarding this item? No one? All right, is this a-
I just want, I have a quick comment, that this project is, a project that is sorely needed at Hampton Oaks Elementary School. They've got some real asphalt problems out there on a, on their side. This is the one on the side, right, where-
The entire-
The entire.
Yeah, it's bad, it's really bad. Going to do it this summer, right?
Ms. Healy?
I, I did have a question, and the description we have says that the proposal's going to include the tree and shrub removal. Is it also going to include the replacement? Because that's not listed in what is included within the scope of the schedule.
Exactly what it includes, there's, if you're familiar with Hampton Oaks, there's some, there was four or five trees that were located right between the parking lot and the playground equipment. And three of those trees, or two of those trees have died in the last five, six years, and so we're removing the other three. There's just a matter of time before they're going to be done.
So we don't want to replace them?
That's correct, yes ma'am.
Okay, that's, that's all my question.
They just need to get it.
No, we don't know that that tree's-
Unfortunately, they are ours.
See, I think, you know, this is, has precedent, because I think, you know, Brook Point was very angry that when they, I think, was it, didn't we redo their parking lot?
Yes, we did.
And we cut through all the shrubs and trees, and they came back with a brand-new parking lot, but there was no green, and we left, and we were like, "What the-"
But we did put flower pots out there.
Right, flower pots, yeah.
And, and I will tell you, the school loves it, the way it is, I mean-
Ms. Kidby, I do-
My concern was we'd get a bill later on for replacing them.
It does say a preferred date. Entertain that motion. It does say that there's a preferred date of this evening, if this is a project, I'm, it is asphalt, so I will defer to Ms. Kidby on whether-
I'd like to move this to action, please.
It's been moved and seconded to move, currently 13.08 to action. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, follow-on motion.
Move for approval, please, the $575,000 using fiscal year 16 VPSA funds for repair payment at Hampton Oaks Elementary School.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our final information item, approve required VRS resolution regarding the 5% member contributions by salary reduction for school divisions. As I recall, this is a annual-type resolution that we have to do, is that correct, Ms., Dr. Benson and Mr. Wolf? Okay. Any questions or discussion? All right, hearing none. Yes, we will move into closed session, if you would like to add it as amended for personnel matters.
That's correct.
Was that correct?
Yes.
Refresh your screen.
Ooh, refresh.
Look at you.
She was way ahead.
Check it in.
Super clerk.
Super clerk, amen. Where is it now? Oh, it didn't go where I was supposed to go. Closed session, here it is. Okay, pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting to discuss or consider public safety pursuant to the personnel exemption at Section 2.2-371A19, legal matters to the personnel exemption of Section 2.2-3711A7, and to discuss personnel matters, Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are in closed session.